Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, August 23, 2021. The time is now 5:00 p.m. If you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
My pledge of allegiance is that I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for Terri Burgess. Terri Burgess passed away on August 17th after a short illness. She volunteered in the town clerk's office before working in the building department as an administrative assistant for almost 10 years and was the first friendly face you saw when you approached that counter. She was always in early and stayed late and was very dedicated. She loved her job at Town Hall and made many close friends in the building. Terri will be deeply missed by all who knew her and loved her. Rest in peace, Terri. All right, next up is public announcements. Alex Hager, did you have any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have one announcement.
Okay.
To Abington's men and women who served in Afghanistan, your service to our nation matters, and we are grateful. Thank you for your bravery to fight against terrorism. When the time called for you to serve your country, to fight for the American way of life again against terrorism and pure evil, you stood up boldly to the task and led with courage and strength. You kept terrorism at bay for 20 years. America is stronger and safer in the world today because of your devotion and your bravery. To our veterans who served in Afghanistan and to their families, please hold your head high. You fought for the common good of all humans. You all are heroes. We are proud of your service. In the times of battle, all gave some, some gave all. We remember all the lives that perished in the Afghan conflict. We remember the patriotic life of Abington hero Marine Sergeant Daniel Vassilian, who gave the ultimate sacrifice to fighting terrorism and pure evil in Afghanistan. Let us honor Sergeant Vassilian's memory by continuing to stand up for what is good in this world. Courage is in the blood of every American. My thoughts and prayers go out to Sergeant Vassilian's family and friends during these challenging times. You will always be in my heart. And we continue to pray for our military, the innocent Afghan people who fought alongside us for 20 years, and the 10,000 and 15,000 American citizens still trapped in the Taliban's rule. May the power of prayer and the American resilience bring our people home. May God bless them, our troops, and our nation. That's all I have for announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mike, any public announcements?
Nothing tonight.
Alex Bazanson?
No.
Tim?
Yeah, Sean Riley asked that we send out the call again for volunteers that are still needed for the Charter Review Committee. At our July 26 meeting, we announced that at least once during every 10 years, the Abington sets up a Charter Review Committee consisting of five resident voters who review the terms and provisions of our current town charter to determine if there's a need, desire to update, add, delete, revise, or clarify any charter provisions. The Charter works as our municipal constitution. The Charter establishes and defines the structure of our town government and its offices and departments. It distributes powers, duties, responsibilities among local offices, and it establishes certain procedures to be followed by our government. Volunteers are needed and are appointed by the town moderator. Committee members are expected to work with department heads, town officials, and other interested residents to gather input and recommendations. Interested residents should apply before Wednesday, August 25th, by sending a letter or email with their name, address, specific qualifications, or reasons why you're interested to sryly@ryllalawoffice.com or by dropping it off at the town manager's office. For more information, you can call Sean Riley at 781-878-2568, extension 15. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next up is public comments. Does anyone have any comments of what's on the agenda? Agenda item number two, we will take those when we get to it. Okay, seeing none, no public appointments. All business, we have none. Action discussion items. First item is vote to approve the minutes of August 9th, 2021. You guys want to review those, and I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from August 9th, 2021.
I'll second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
So next up is discussion and possible vote regarding complaint against members of the Abington Conservation Commission. So a little backstory here. The Board of Selectmen received a complaint, which I'll read in a second. At that point, I instructed the town manager to conduct an investigation, and I called for this meeting we have here tonight. As far as the complaint, I'm going to read it. It's a little lengthy, but I will read it all to you. "To the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, and Head of Conservation, this email is being sent out to inform the Board of Selectmen of individuals that were on my property and the capacity of representing the Town of Abington Conservation Commission. My name is Richard E. Montgomery, and I live at 37 Orchard Lane. I also own 75 Dale Street, where my nephew called me from to tell me that our driveway is blocked off again by four individuals who are walking the property. Upon arriving to the property, Joan Harding asked me to wait a minute while she moved her car. I approached the group and asked if there was something that I can do for them. Karen Bowen approached me and introduced me to Jim Dombrowski. Standing there, the group continued to talk about my property. This is a clear violation of the Open Meeting Act. Jim Dombrowski informed me that I have been working inside of a 200-foot buffer zone, which is for the Open River Act. I explained to him that the survey and engineering firm has been out to the property and has clearly marked the property. I was informed back in April by both Grady Engineering and the survey company that the water that flows through my property is an intermittent stream and has a 100-foot buffer. Jim Dombrowski then asked me to put my hands out. Unsure where this was going, with all three other individuals standing there, I did so. He then asked me to flip my hands over. Still unsure where this was going, I did so. Mr. Dombrowski then reached out and slapped me and stated, 'That was gentle in comparison to what we could do to you.' At this point, I have been assaulted, threatened, and belittled by Mr. Dombrowski in front of Ms. Bowen, Ms. Harding, and another female individual. At this point, I feel as though Mr. Dombrowski wants me to be confrontational with him. I took a step back and informed all four individuals that the next time the commission wanted to come to my property, I wanted a phone call and 24 hours' notice so that I can have proper representation. Lawyer, engineers, and surveyor. These are the professionals that are licensed, registered with the state, and can answer the questions that the commission may have and should be done in a quorum in which the whole commission can attend. In regard to my Dale Street property, I feel at this point these individuals have a skewed thought process. I have contacted the town manager and the Conservation Committee chairman, who knew nothing about these individuals making visits to the properties in town. I have also filed a report with the Abington Police Department in regards to this incident. I hope in closing, as a veteran, taxpayer, and landowner, this type of intimidation and assault will not be tolerated by the Town of Abington. I don't want these individuals near me, my family, my property. Furthermore, I hope to have the Conservation Committee chairman and town manager investigate these individuals' intentions while working on the Conservation Committee and representing the Town of Abington. I'm also requesting those members that were on my property be removed from any decision-making or votes that have to do with my Dale Street property, as we know that the information put forth by Mr. Dombrowski about the so-called river is false and is registered as an intermittent stream, which was discussed at the last Conservation meeting in July. Thank you for your service to the Town. I hope to hear from you soon. Richard E. Montgomery." So with that being said, Scott, could you talk about your investigation and what you found?
So, yeah, at your request, and after receiving the complaint, I reached out to the members of the Conservation Commission that were called out in the complaint and present on site. I did talk to Mr. Montgomery on Friday shortly after this happened. Mr. Montgomery seemed very upset. He pretty much spelled things out to me on the phone the same way that you've read them. He did seem as though, he felt as though he was embarrassed and humiliated by this, by the contact. So what I have found after questioning all four of the commission members, it doesn't appear that there was a, there was no notice of the site visit given to the property owner. There was a request at the previous Conservation Commission meeting by one of the members of the Conservation Commission if they could come out and visit the property. But at no time was a date certain or a time certain set. The property owner did say he would be willing to let them have a site visit, but again, there was no set date and time. Out of the members that were present that day, three of the members are voting members. That would be Lynn Mullen, Karen Bowen, and Joanne Harding. The additional member of Jim Dombrowski is an alternate member. When you look at the makeup of the board as an eight-member board, including the alternate member who was present, this does not constitute a quorum. So there was no open meeting law violation. However, there are other issues that come to mind that I'll go over. So as they have all agreed that they did show up at the property, when I spoke with Lynn and with Joanne Harding, they had suggested that they were not aware that nobody had reached out to Mr. Montgomery. Karen Bowen and Jim Dombrowski did suggest that they had permission, and they felt that they were well within their rights of that permission, and they had the, you know, the ability to show up there, obviously, when they did. While they were there, there were obviously, discussions were made regarding the fact that there was a tree clearing, there was a proposed sheer driveway, and that there was possible violations of the Wetland Act, specifically the building within the buffer of the river. Mr. Montgomery was told by Mr. Dombrowski to put out his hands, and this was confirmed by three of the four folks that were there. Mr. Dombrowski then did slap Mr. Montgomery's hand and told him that this is gentle in comparison to what we could do. The members of the commission that were present all suggested that it was a mere playful tap and a very light slap. Mr. Montgomery obviously feels very differently about it. Mr. Montgomery, on the receiving end of it, felt as though it was not just a playful tap, that it was specifically meant to intimidate and humiliate him. So again, as I said, it appears there is no violation of the open meeting law. There does, however, appear to have been significant deliberation, but where there was no quorum, that again is not a violation of the open meeting law. Certainly, what we do have here, though, is showing up at someone's property unannounced without an appointment and then entering that property without permission at that specific time leads to questions of probably trespass. There was also the fact that there was a contact, a slap on the wrist, so to speak. Again, that leads to a possible assault and certainly intimidation, and while under the guise of being a representative of the town. Again, at least in the conversations I had with all of the members, Joanne Harding and Lynn Mullen seemed to have been under the impression somebody else might have arranged for the meeting. Karen and Jim felt as though that they were there properly because they had asked permission. They all, three out of the four of them, did witness, including Jim Dombrowski, who did admit on the phone that, yes, he did make that contact, the physical contact, and slapped the wrist of Mr. Montgomery. And I think that's pretty much the bullet points that we have there.
Okay. So at this time, if you have nothing further, Scott, I probably would like to, I think we should hear from the members, but also hear from the person who filed the complaint as well. Does the Board have any further thoughts on that? If we go through the complainants here, you can come up and speak, and then we can hear from the members of the commission.
If they so choose, I don't want them to.
So if you'd like to speak, you don't have to, but the first person I would like to hear from would be the homeowner, Richard Montgomery. If you're here, if you want to come up to the podium, state your name and address. And again, with everyone as we speak tonight, please keep it to this complaint. Let's not get off track yet. You know, we don't want to go down, you know, a path yet. We just keep to this complaint and the facts and what we see and what we're hearing.
Good evening. My name is Richard Montgomery. I live at 37 Orchard Lane in Abington. I am here to follow up on a complaint that I filed with the Selectmen, the chairman, and the Conservation Committee, along with the Abington Police Department. I currently own 75 Dale Street of Abington. I know that you have read my complaint, and I would like to thank you for the immediate responses to the complaint. The statements that was made in that complaint is 100% accurate. I was influenced by nobody. I sat down immediately after this incident happened, and I put it down in paper and tried to contact both the town manager and also the chairman of Conservation. I felt that Mr. Dombrowski's tactics were intimidating, threatening in a manner, and his quote to me and slapping me on the hand was absolutely uncalled for. To meet this individual for the first time and have that broadcasted across to me is beyond words. I'm a high school teacher. I've been a teacher for 23 years. I can tell you at my job, if I meet a student and I slap him on the hands, I'm leaving in handcuffs. That I can guarantee you. I wrote the complaint minutes after this, was taking place of the four members. Unfortunately, I only knew of three of the four members. I did not know the fourth member's name. I did ask them all to leave my property. If they were to return, I was looking for proper notification, and I let them all know that. I wanted at least 24 to 48 hours' notice, something in writing, so that I could go out and have proper representation. It's fair for me to ask for my lawyer, the individuals that I paid to mark the property, and the engineers to be there, just to answer the questions I simply don't know the answers I do have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask the chair, if that's okay?
You can ask him, yes.
Okay. Did you receive any notice from these four individuals that they were going to come to my property?
The chairman of the Board of Selectmen, no.
Do we know if the chairman of Conservation received any written information from these individuals asking to go there?
I don't believe so, Scott. Do you know if that was?
We have an email from him saying.
We have.
The chairman's here of Conservation. He can answer to it, but.
I have a statement I'm going to make in a minute. I'll clarify a lot of this.
If you want to ask the questions, then when he speaks, you can.
Okay. Is it common for the Town of Abington's Conservation Committee members to have the ability to go onto a taxpayer's property without the property owner present, knowing, and allowing these individuals to block the driveway so that family members cannot come and go?
Okay.
With these four Conservation members trespassing on my property, does that violate the open law, open meeting law? I believe you already answered that?
Yes.
Finally, this is a question for all Board members. Was there special permission given to these four members allowing them to belittle, threaten, or punish a landowner? Because that's really what I feel like is taking place here.
Any further questions, or are those?
No more questions, just a closing statement. With all this new information and the three facts that these members have been on my property multiple times, and they have been on my property multiple times, I feel it may be in violation to allow them to come again to my property at any given point from here on out. It also seems to me that it will no longer be a fair, just, or a vote with proceedings that I am going forth in front of the Conservation Committee for these four members to be there, simply because they're having meetings outside of their commission on my property, and I had no representation. There definitely seems to be a pattern here, knowing that they've been on my property more than once for visits. And I would request you as Selectmen, for the betterment of the Town of Abington, to either ask these members to resign from their positions or have their appointments revoked. Because I just simply feel they have taken power way beyond their control of what they're allowed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, if we can hear from the chairman of the Conservation Commission.
Michael Noonan, 63 Mulberry Drive, also chair of the Abington Conservation. For the record, first, I would like to make note that me as the chair, Russ Forth as co-chair, Paul Bunker, and Richard Smith were unaware of these site visits in question. The problem I have with these four members is they do not oblige with the procedures and protocol of the Conservation Commission and show a lack of respect for anyone else. First, and this goes back to when Alec Bazanson was on and the chair, it has always been, if the Conservation Commission would like to have a visit to a property, the owner slash applicant is asked if it is okay. If permission is given, the Board would establish a date and time so all parties would be prepared. For instance, like Mr. Montgomery just said, if the owner would like to have any representation present. This then will be considered a continuation of an existing meeting. It would not break any open meeting laws. Second, Jim Dombrowski uses bullying tactics to try to force the committee to do things that cannot be done. Case in point, he brought to our last meeting, and note, his first meeting, a piece of property he demanded the commission take a vote and take the land as conservation land. Two problems. One, it was not on the agenda. Two, there is a proper procedure for this acquisition. He would not listen and kept demanding the vote to be taken. We did not take the vote. I confirmed with the town manager the procedure. He reconfirmed with town council, and it came as Jim was wrong. He seems to think with his.
Just so we can, I know there's other things, but if we could stick to this, please.
I also feel that Karen and Joanne are part of this bullying tactic, and I don't know Lynn well enough, but I think that she might be part of this also. I will just move on now, and I feel that the Board will be split in future if these members are not removed, and this is not good for the Town or the applicants coming in front of the Conservation Commission. You, the Selectmen, are appointing authority, and decision will be respected. I personally do not think that these members are good for the Town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next, if the members that are named in the complaint want to come up and speak, one at a time, if you come up to the podium, state your name and address. You do not have to speak if you don't want to, but if you would like to come up and speak to it, please come up.
My name is Jim Dombrowski. I live at 28 Temple Street, Abington. I've been involved in a variety of Abington's environmental matters for years. Of course, I want to speak to the allegation that four members violated the open meeting law. I want to read.
Mr. Dombrowski, we've already, the town manager's already stated that that is, was not a violation. It's an eight-member board. There was only four.
I would like to point something of a clarification.
You can make it brief if there's something, but it's already been said that there's not a violation there.
Definition of a deliberation, an oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail between among or among a quorum of a public body on any public business. Meeting, deliberation by a public body with respect to any matter within the body's jurisdiction. Provided, however, meetings shall not include, A, an onsite inspection for a project or program, so long as the members do not deliberate. At no time were any of the members present on Mr. Montgomery's property that they deliberate on any matter. He was asked during a meeting, and if you watched YouTube, you would hear the question being posed to Mr. Montgomery, if we could visit the property. We went there with the intention of viewing the property, not coming up with any conclusions, but simply viewing what we saw. If you saw the presentation by Doug Alwick at that meeting, you would see that various areas were in violation of the Wetlands Protection Act. During the discussion with Mr. Montgomery, when he first came into the driveway and Joanne dening his vehicles in the way, I asked Joanne to move her vehicle. She did. The discussion with Mr. Montgomery was so short, so brief, I can't fathom how someone can say something was, so much had occurred. I told Mr. Montgomery that he was in violation, what I saw was in violation of the Wetlands Protection Act, and I gently tapped the back of his hand. It wasn't a slap, it wasn't a punch, it wasn't a hit, it was a tap. I'd do the same thing to my granddaughter. There was no discussions afterwards with that. The discussion with Mr. Montgomery was brief, in short, non-confrontational, no raised voices, no argument, no nothing. The last thing that was asked of us before we left the property was that if he could have his engineers install silt fences. Apparently, there was coming that day to install them. Commission never approved that. We never discussed it. We never got into entertaining any motion to approve it.
Okay.
So with respect to a lot that's contained within that report, there are some inaccuracies.
Okay.
And I believe the other three members who were present there also heard the same thing. But what he was said when he received that gentle slap was that you're in violation of the Wetlands Protection Act in various areas. No discussion in what he calls the 200-foot riverfront protection act. The 100-foot buffer zone apparently applies. And most, that was not even discussed with him or anyone else. If you went there and you saw the driveway, you would see what materials have been brought in and dumped and graded, clearly within the 100-foot buffer zone, clearly. Within the wetland zone, potentially, because we didn't have the plans with us to look and review. We weren't there to in-depth review the plans, which is something that most Conservation commissioners do. They arrange to go out, people were asked if we can visit the property, and that's simply to view what's going on. You can't sit behind a desk, look at a plan, and determine what's going on out in the field. You have to physically go out and see what's going on.
So, Mr. Dombrowski, I understand that, but if you could, if you have anything further to speak to the complaint here, or any, you said there was some misinformation. Do you have anything to add to this complaint?
He was not heavily slapped. It was a tap.
Mr. Dombrowski, did you touch him?
It was a tap to his hand.
Did you touch him?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And in the Constitution law.
So one quick thing for you, Mr. Dombrowski. What was, why did you, why did you do that? What was the slap for? What was the touch for?
It wasn't intimidating, it wasn't threatening.
But what did you do it for?
Excuse me?
What did you do it for? Did you just reach out randomly?
I just reached out and said, "Let me see your hand." He handed it to me, turned it over, and gently tapped it.
But why did you do that?
The same time I told him it was in violation of the Wetlands, but I don't know why I did it. It's probably because I do it to my kid, my granddaughter.
But it was in correlation to?
It wasn't, it wasn't out of being a threat, it wasn't out of intimidation, it wasn't out of to be brutal to him or anything of that nature.
But what I'm saying is, was it, was it in regards to the wetlands violation that you're discussing, you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Did you tell him that this is minor compared to what we can do to you?
No.
You didn't say anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Dombrowski, sorry to cut you off, but.
It's all right.
Anything further you have on this complaint?
Any other questions you have. The discussion between the four of us and Mr. Montgomery was very short, very brief, and then we left the property.
Okay. Tim, you said you had a couple of questions?
Two questions. And the first question, I just, I just, how old's your granddaughter? And I asked that.
18 months.
18 months. Eighteen months. So you treat the residents like they're eighteen months, like-
Excuse me?
You, you said you, you did that like you do it to your granddaughter, so you're-
Deforested.
Because, I'm trying to go back to the reason why you did it, I guess.
Probably because he was doing something wrong. I do it to my granddaughter when she goes to try to pull on the dog's tail.
Right, because that's how you-
You get it to stop it.
A baby. Correct, okay. And do you think you did anything wrong during this whole thing? Was there anything you'd do differently?
I wouldn't touch him. I talked to the police department Sunday night, and that's when he explained to me the process. And I said, you kid me. Said even an aggressive handshake could constitute as a violation. So within the all-encompassing scope of what they put in there, the simple touch was what was a violation.
Why didn't you invite the rest of the Board to the-
I didn't, I didn't arrange the meet, the setup. The one, three, three other members wanted to conduct a site viewing to look at four-
Somebody, somebody started, someone said, let's go out there. Who said, let's go out there and look?
Karen Bowen was the one who wanted to go out-
Okay.
And set up, set up a viewing of the sites. She asked-
And none of you thought that you should notify the Chairman or the other members of the Board?
During the meeting, he heard it.
That's not my question.
Mr. Dombrowski, did, did the owner give you permission that day to go to that property? To his property?
I didn't talk to him, no.
Then why would you show up on the property without the permission?
We were there under the impression that we had his authority to go up there and view the property.
So, my, back to my point. One of you, or more than one of you, said, let's go out to this site, and let's not tell the Chairman and the others. Correct?
Let's go out, not tell anyone?
Well, there were four other members that, no, no, this, this, this didn't happen at the meeting. You didn't set up a sidewalk at the meeting.
I didn't.
That's right. And that's when it should be set up, when everyone's there so they can make the appointment. But after the meeting, one of you, or more than one of you, said, called each other, texted each other or something, said, let's go out to the sidewalk, and don't tell the other four members.
The Chairman of the Conservation Commission did not determine that a site meeting was warranted.
You're not answering my question.
I didn't set it up.
Who set up the meeting after the Conservation meeting?
Excuse me?
Who set up the sidewalk after the Conservation meeting?
Karen Bowen.
Karen Bowen. Did you set up the sidewalk with these four members?
After the meeting?
No, after the meeting.
After the meeting, yes.
You did.
I asked them if they wanted to-
Hold on, that's-
Please come up to the microphone. So you asked these four members that ended up going out there-
Karen Bowen, 937 Plymouth Street.
You asked the four members that actually went out there to go, and you never asked-
I invited, I invited them.
And you never invited the other four members?
Well, there's a couple of them that-
It's a yes or no answer.
I won't answer yes or no.
Okay.
I will say to you that there were a couple that don't have an interest.
Okay.
Therefore, the ones that were interested in learning and seeing the stream, yes. And now I just want to reiterate a couple of things. The DEP called us out for a site visit in April, and we met Mr. Montgomery. He showed us his vision, we walked the cart road, we saw everything. I told him about the dog, I told him about the pony. He said, you can come out anytime and walk your dog, all right? Shame on me for figuring out that that, or interpreting that as being a perpetual, you can come out and walk.
Did you have your dog with you on the sidewalk?
Not, not the sidewalk, no. Okay, and then during our meeting, on the third, I again asked him if we could come out to visit, and he said, anytime. He said, come, you're welcome, anytime.
I still don't understand why, you were going out there that morning, and you never invited the other, you never called or text the other four members and asked?
I'm sorry, maybe it's because we haven't had any training to tell us exactly how this is supposed to go. We're relatively new members.
Have you been to the MAC training?
Have I been to the MAC training? I've been to a couple of the MACC, but it's been specific, like wetland delineation, or specific items, nothing that says, this is how you do it. In fact, I was just on the phone with the DEP, who said, according to 310 CMR 1008, CONCOM, its members or agents, the department employees, may enter the private, privately-owned land for purposes of performing duties under the Mass General Law, C-13, S-40, WPA, subject to, subject to constitutional limitations. What the constitutional limitations are, I don't know.
I would say it's probably the owner's permission.
Well, I don't know, but he gave us perpetual permission.
I'm still hung up on you four went out there without telling the other members.
The others aren't interested.
Which leaves me to believe there was some deception here.
No, there was no deception. Do not, do not, do not look at me and say this deception. You are accusing me of something. We innocently went out-
I'm accusing you of going out there without notifying the rest of the Board, absolutely.
Well, I, I wasn't aware, I tried to get-
You weren't aware?
I wasn't, no, I wasn't, and I tried getting in con-
You weren't aware that you can't do a sidewalk without, without notifying all the members?
When a notice of intent is filed, and you have any kind of question, you have, it needs to be physically viewed, and property can be viewed. Again, shame on me for taking it by his, I'm, please, please look at the video, please-
I think, Ms. Bowen, I think that the point that we're missing here is, that's being overlooked, is the Conservation Commission, it doesn't say it's individual members, the Commission can visit. So, so that, those are things where, in a, in a meeting, you would go, you would discuss, you would post, you would continue a meeting. That, I think that's what you're reading right there, is the Conservation Commission.
It says, CONCOM, its members or agents, it doesn't mean whole.
Conservation Commission, it's members or it's agent, agents, that's the Board. It's a, it's a unified Board, I mean, you guys all-
You would think, you would hope.
That's why we have a meeting, that's why we have open meeting law, that's why you have to publish things, post things, give notice, those type of things.
It wasn't the intent to create a special meeting-
No.
-of viewing the property.
Well-
For that, you would have to go through the process of posting notification.
So let's, at this point, Mr. Dombrowski, do you have anything further that you would like to speak on, so that we can kind of go through all the members?
I just think this whole process is skewed the wrong way.
Okay.
You're not looking at complete information.
Did you put your hands on Mr. Montgomery?
Excuse me?
Did you put your hands on Mr. Montgomery?
I put my hand on him, yes, I did.
Okay, so, if there's nothing further from Mr. Dombrowski, I'd like Ms. Bowen to be able to speak, and then we can hear the next member. So, Ms. Bowen, I know you were called up for the question, but if, if you could start from what you wanted to speak on, on the complaint.
Okay.
And again, but we're, let's keep it to the complaint, we're not going to other areas of the complaint that's filed, and that's what we're going to speak on today.
Okay. Again, I'm sorry, Mr. Montgomery, but you did say we could come out anytime. I'm sorry that I wasn't aware that you're supposed to put it in writing or give you a call. Plus, it was Friday the 13th, everybody's working on that particular day. I'm retired, I have the time. It was an innocent miscommunication, and there's somebody else in here that, you know, never mind. But anyway, another thing too, on his notes, I just want to let you know that he states, and I didn't hear it because I was not there, he states that Mr. Dombrowski did this in front of Mrs. Bowman, Mrs. Harding, and another female individual. I took a phone call at 9:49 and was talking for seven minutes and five seconds behind a tree when that went on to the consumi, to the Commission on Cape Cod, and I've got the records, and you can call them. So, he states that I was witness to this, when in fact, I wasn't. I introduced Jim to Mr. Montgomery, because Jim is a wealth of knowledge, and it was just like an educational kind of thing that we were doing. Lynn's new, and they had like a, you know, five-minute conversation, or seven minutes, seven-minute conversation, then I came back to it. Rick was not, did not appear to be upset, he appeared to be fine, we said goodbye, have a good weekend, and that was the extent of it. So, he's misinforming you as to me being a witness, because I wasn't there. I was behind a tree on the phone. And I will give you the Conservation, the Commission of Cape Cod's telephone number, if you'd like, and you can speak to the woman I spoke to.
So just to clarify, you were on the property, you just weren't there at that time, point in time when he was-
When the alleged incident-
The alleged assault.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, but you were on the property, you were just on the phone-
Yeah.
Away from there, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, talking with, oh, and also, he said that, discussed at the Conservation meeting in July, it was discussed at the Conservation meeting in August, whether that's, I mean, I'm just, I'm only pointing this out because his facts aren't completely factual. So, you know, you can take that as splitting hairs if you wish, but, you know, don't accuse me of witnessing something if I haven't. I did not witness it because I was not physically in that group. And again, too, after talking to DEP, when a notice of intent is filed, we have the right to go out and view the property to make sure that all the borders, there were so many times that we are passing NOIs and doing an order of condition, and nobody's even seen what it is physically, what we're doing. They look at the papers. And so it's very important for the property around here and the conservation that it's viewed, so things are doing properly. I think his pumpkin farm and his tree farm is absolutely phenomenal, I, I think it's a great thing for the town. Just, you know, nobody's trying to stop him from doing his family thing, they just want it to be done properly, and that's what the issue is. Some people don't like to follow the rules.
So again, on this complaint, sticking to this complaint here, is there anything further you want to state?
No, that's pretty much it. We have other statements to be taken. Thank you very much for your time.
I have a question.
You have a-
What would you do different next time? Well, what you think you did wrong this time?
I don't think I did anything wrong. The next time, I would just be aware that I'm supposed to put it in an email, that this is what I'm going to do, you want to come, all right?
I'll also give him, you should probably invite the whole Board.
Pardon?
You should probably invite the whole Board. That's just my-
Well, I can't invite the whole Board, because that would be emailing everybody and having an open meeting law violation, or something like that.
Ms. Bowen, have you ever requested to put anything on the agenda?
Ye, yes, and I was told that if I wanted to put something on the agenda, I had to run it by the Chairman, because he could say yea or nay.
Okay.
And that, I don't think is right, because he's not God. He's not the boss of, you know, he's not the boss of the Commission.
But you want to, you want to see on that, every year, you know, the Boards reorganize, and with members being on, and you can, you know, a new Chairman could come through, a new Vice Chairman, stuff like that.
Now, go back and ask me the question, one of you was asking me a question, and I lost my train of thought.
I have one other question, I don't know what's that.
Tim, maybe that's one.
Okay.
Oh, you wanted me to know what I would do differently?
Different.
Yes, I would do that, but I also want to let you know that I have, on Thursday, I emailed an incident to the Town Manager and the Conservation Chairman and John Stone, and I still haven't heard back.
I tell you did.
I haven't gotten an email back.
You, you were copied on the email, yeah.
Oh, this morning?
No. Like, the day after.
Well, it must have gotten lost in the spam or something, because I did not see it, and I haven't gotten-
I have one other question. Did you visit any other sites that day?
We drove around and just pointed out, this is going to be happening here, and that's going to be happening here.
But you didn't get out of your car and visit any sites?
I get out of my car.
So you didn't just drive around. Did you visit any other sites that day?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do you want to get, yeah, please, your name and address, please?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yep.
With the mask on, okay. I'm Lynn Mullin, and I live at 15 McGeeo Street. I'm the new member of the Commission, still kind of learning the ropes. I just, first want to address the first thing, the conversation that we're having here about, did we purposely exclude other members of the Commission? At the meeting, Karen turned to all of us and said, hey, if any of you guys want to go on a site visit, just let me know. And so I thought, oh, that'd be kind of interesting to go, but she, she said that for every site that we had an issue with. She said, hey, just let me know. And so, it's, everybody was asked. We had the option to go ahead and email her and say if we wanted to go, and I decided I'd like to.
That's not how it's supposed to be done.
Okay. I'm not aware of a lot of those things.
And I know you're the newest member on the Board-
Yes.
And that you don't know what the others know, or what they should know, but that's not how a sidewalk should be done. I was on the Conservation Commission for 23 years, and I was Chairman for 15 years, and never once did we have an incident like this.
Okay. But I just wanted to make that clear, that there was no exclusion-
I understand.
-that was being put there. In terms of what happened that day, I mean, we talked about the open meeting law, and I wasn't sure how it worked, if, we were spent all week trying to find a time that we could go, and I wasn't sure of, you know, how the process would go, if Karen had talked to the property owner or not, but when I arrived, I assumed everything was just fine. We had a report at the meeting that there had been some clearcutting of wetlands, so we wanted to drive up and take, you know, take a look and come back down. We had reports that there was something going on the driveway, we want to take a look at that. In terms of what happened with Mr. Dombrowski, and I apologize if I said your name incorrectly, Ms. Bowen is correct, she had taken a phone call, it was just four of us, and Jim did turn to him and say, what, what happened is, he said, okay, so, when did you buy the property? And he said, in March. When did you clearcut? He said, in May. And then he said, give me your hand. And I was like, okay, where's this going? Asked him to flip it, and then he went like that, and said, don't do it again. But he did not say whatever it is that is in that complaint afterwards. When I read that complaint, I almost spit out my water that I was drinking, because he did not say that. If he did, we would have said something to him. In fact, after, when the owner walked away, Joanne said, Jim, you're not supposed to touch people. And he said, well, why, you know, and I said, no, you're not supposed to touch people. But if he had said, like, hey, you know, like, we're a bunch of gangsters and we're going to mess you up or something, we would have said something about that, and we didn't, and it didn't happen.
Ms. Mullin, do you feel that that was appropriate?
No. And I told him afterwards, you don't hit people.
And if that was, I mean, do you, do you see you doing that to any residents, that you would go walk their property?
No, no. I think he's an older generation, he probably thought it was kind of funny. It was, I could see Mr. Montgomery looked a little more embarrassed by it, kind of like he was being shamed, and nobody likes to be shamed, you know?
Definitely.
Be treated like a kid, or, but that's the way I, I felt, it was like, more kind of jokey, but there are people who do things, and you're like, eh, that's not really funny, and you realize that. Okay, all right, what do I do with that now?
Yes.
I'm trying to think, just now, Mr. Montgomery said that all the members had been on the property multiple times. This is my first time ever been to his property. I don't know about the other members, I think, you know, Karen has been to the property one other time, but I have never been there before, and we have not come back. He also said he told us to leave. He did not tell us to leave. He's making it sound a lot more dramatic than it actually is. We left cordially, and, you know, we're even saying things, the very, very end, Joanne, or, sorry, not Joanne, Karen said to him, hey, you know what? You should think, instead of Christmas trees, you know, it takes 15 to 20 years to grow them, what if you try hemp instead? Because, you know, faster rate of return, you know, it's not the cannabis stuff, because he was a little uncomfortable and said, I'm a military brat, and I think he was thinking brat. And I think he was thinking of the type of hemp that had cannabis in it. But she clarified, that's not what she was talking about. So, to me, that would seem, if I were the property owner, and I'm not, that would seem like a situation where maybe it'll get approved, because she's talking instead about, well, we're not going to let you do this, but instead giving you a suggestion for, hey, instead of this, what if you try growing this?
So, just a question, another question for you, Ms. Mullen. If, put yourself in this, you were the property owner, and this, this half of commission shows up at your property, or you get a call that they're on your property, and you go there. And you, you guys were there in regards to basically, you know, whatever his complaint or talk about, from a meeting. So, you were there, I'm assuming you guys were there as representatives of the town, of the commission at that point. You're not there as a private party by yourself. You were there as a group to deal with conservation. Coming onto the property as your, as a homeowner, do you, would you, you know, put yourself in those shoes, would you feel that you could just tell them all to leave, or would you kind of just go along and kind of, okay, like, I'll, they're here, they're looking at it, they must be here and officially leave with the commission? You know, do you get what I'm saying? If, if you came to your property and there was...
As somebody that you didn't really know very well came onto your property, what would I do?
Like, no, I'm not, you didn't know them very well. I mean, whether, regardless if you knew them or not, they were there for the Conservation Commission, as, as they might have stated, or discussing, you know, the creek and, and different things like that.
Right.
You know, would you assume that they were there officially for the town and, you know, let them do their thing?
I would assume, I would, if somebody came to my property.
Yeah.
Like National Grid. I'm having solar installed, and they come on my property all the time. And I'm like, hi, what's going on? Is there a problem? And they go, oh, we're just doing this. And while it's annoying to me, because I would like to know if someone's going to come on my property. And I would be annoyed by that, and I would probably say to them, okay, you know, next time, you, you know, give me some notice. I'd appreciate that. I would say that. But I don't think that I would say, hey, get off my property. That's just, I don't do that.
Okay.
That's just not my way of being.
Okay.
But as a, as a property owner myself, and someone who works for a living, I want to make certain, you know, if somebody needs to be looking at my water heater or something like that, I do want to be there.
Yeah. And I wasn't, and I know you use National Grid. I was, I was thinking more of a town level, a town committee, a town board, or town representative shows up at your property. So, but, but thank you for your input on that. Do you have anything further to add?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Does the board have any questions, Ms. Mullen?
How, how did you hear about the site visit?
How did I hear about the site visit?
Yeah, the date and time.
Well, Karen mentioned at the meeting, hey, if anybody wants to come, just let me know. So, I said, okay. And I just, I emailed her and said, hey, can we go? And how does, you know, just let me know when we can do it. These are the dates and times I have available. And then we went through this long process, because I got sick, I thought I had COVID, I, you know, and then, just, you know, so, we were planning on doing it this day, and we spent all week just trying to find times that everybody can go. But there was no, like, we're going to go at this day and time. It was just amongst the group of us who seemed to be interested.
And the group of you is just the four members?
Yeah. Just the people who had indicated that they were interested in going.
And I just had a question. During, when you were talking, I think I missed something, but you were saying you had received reports that something was going on, on the property?
Yeah. So, at the meeting, Doug Olwick, their neighbor, came up and gave a very dramatic presentation, where he showed pictures of wetlands being cleared, or at least adjoining lands being cleared without a permit. And he also had mentioned, he had some other pictures of the driveway, because there's this issue with the possibility of having a shared driveway. And the, this went before the planning board, before he went to the Conservation Commission. And so, the idea is, well, if they can't get that approved from, for the planning board, is it possible for them to make a driveway next to it? So, we were there to, to look at that. But those are the only things that we were there to look at. And that was because of Mr. Olwick's presentation at our meeting.
Okay. So, so those are, the reports you're talking about is just what you heard at the meeting?
Yeah, and the pictures that we saw.
At the meeting?
At the meeting.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else from the board?
No.
Mike, anything, no?
No, thank you.
If you don't have anything further to add, I thank you. And if anyone else wants to get up and speak from that complaint, please get up, name and address, please.
My name's Joanne Damac Harding. I live at 183 Summer Street. I attended on the 13th. And although I do feel embarrassed for Mr. Montgomery, he's not exactly saying how it was. There's so many things that actually is not right, that I actually have taken great offense. I want to say that Mr. Dombrowski did not say what he said, and I would have said something if that was the case, if he did. You know, I've got, I've got a good job. I'm a fiduciary. I would not put myself in a situation where it would compromise my future. I just wouldn't do it. I turned up last, I was only there because of the fact that I had the day off. I thought they were going on Tuesday or Wednesday. But it turns out, they were going to Friday. Karen said, we're going down. I'm like, okay, I'll come. I've got plans today, but I'll come. Everything was kosher, other than what happened with the tap, and it was a tap. I didn't see him step back. He looked embarrassed. You know, I, I feel bad that all of this is happening. I, when I get, got the phone call, I just was flabbergasted, because he seemed fine when we left. He didn't ask us to leave. And we weren't actually talking in a group a lot of this time, too. When I arrived, Mr. Dombrowski and Lynn was checking out the flags in the wetland area. I'm not quite sure where you were, Karen, but, you know, we weren't there talking about specifically his property. And I do not make assumptions. I would go to the, the meeting tomorrow and wait and see what the plans were before I'd make any decision, because he has been asked to supply more information. So, I take great offense, and I just want you guys to know that I'm not happy about this at all. You call my character into play? That's not good. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mrs. Harding, how long have you been on the commission?
Three years.
Were you aware that not all of the members were aware of this meeting?
They were aware that they're allowed to go.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if anyone contacted Karen about it.
Who was in the group text for the week before, texting back and forth, Tuesday, Wednesday? Who, who was everyone in, in the group text?
I wasn't in that group text.
Did you text them individually?
I texted individually.
And you texted individually for a week prior, and never thought to notify the other four members of the board?
I wasn't even going to go.
Okay.
It was a last minute thing. It was, I was cooking breakfast. Hey, we're going down. I said, fine, I'll finish eating, and, which I did, which is why I was late.
Have you done other site visits like this in your, in the three years?
No.
So...
Oh.
We were asked by the DEP...
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Yep.
To go to the site in April.
There was a complaint made. DEP contacted Karen, I believe Nancy contacted Karen also. I wasn't on that email. She said, I'm, I'm going down, there's a complaint. Would, would you like to come with me? And I said, fine.
Did the chairman know about that complaint?
I don't know. It wasn't on that email.
We're going to have him come up, and I answer that after.
I mean, I did, at the time, say to him when we were leaving, and that was more of a social kind of meeting also. He had some elderly friends that came by, and, you know, it was quite pleasant. But before I left, I did say, before you do anything else, you really need to come before the Conservation Commission. And he was lopping trees at the time.
So, at the meeting, Karen said, if anybody wants to go on the site visit, to email me. So, you emailed Karen and said, I want to go?
No. No.
Did she?
She said, if anyone wants to go, I'm going down. Just get in contact with me.
Yeah. So, you got in contact with her, and let her know you wanted to go?
Well, I said, I'd like to go.
Yeah.
Because of Doug Olwick's presentation. So, she knew I wanted to go that night.
Was this during the, the meeting, like, recorded meeting, that this was asked, or...
Uh, to be honest, I, I don't recall.
Okay. So, I thank you. And do you have anything further to add to this, or to speak to, or...
All I want to say is, you know, I feel bad that this has happened, but honestly, it's, this has just been blown out of proportion. You know, I would not, I would not do anything that I knew was a-illegal. It's just been blown out of proportion. And I regret that it's happening, too.
Okay.
And I do service this town, and I love this town. We don't get paid. We got no skin in the game. We're doing what we're, we're supposed to do. We've been appointed, on behalf of you guys, on behalf of the whole town, to go out there and make sure that rules are followed. That's all we're doing. We're not making judgments, not out in the field.
But you would agree that there's a procedure to follow in doing so, right?
I'm sure there is, but I, I wasn't aware of any, no, no appointments being made or anything. All I heard was, you can come anytime. I've told, I've said that many times. And that's, you know, if you actually listen to the meeting, you'll be able to hear it.
Okay. Anything, any questions from the board, or...
No, I mean, I just, to the, you can come by anytime. I mean, I've, serving on this board, there's been multiple members who have come up to me, not multiple members, I mean, residents who have come up to me and said, oh, please, I want you to look at my property, look at this situation, or this, how this is looking. And never once did I, I, could I just show up without permission. I had to get the permission to be there, and when the day and the time was.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
Which has happened to me personally. I have back, I have wetlands at the back of me. We were doing some construction work, and we had to put in a notice of intent with the town, and I had someone from the Conservation Board show up without notifying us before. So, I didn't think it was a big deal. I said, of course, come on in.
But even so, that doesn't make it right, and it's not procedure.
Okay. But what I'm saying, I hear you, Alex.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, I didn't know the difference.
Did you, did, were you aware if anyone had notified Mr. Montgomery to, to walk the property?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, any residents that would like to get up and, and speak? Actually, do we want to hear from the chairman about, it was some, one of the things that came up about the April site visit? There was, there was a question, if you could just...
Again, Michael Lunes, 63 Mulberry Drive. I can clarify a few procedures. Sometimes, myself or Russ as vice chair, make a call from Nancy Hurst, where people will call up and maybe have a, think there's a violation going on. One of us, sometimes maybe two of us, but that's all, will show up, because there's been a phone call. We will knock on the door, explain the situation, and this is regular procedure, as if the building inspector were being called up about a building violation. Okay? But it goes through Town Hall, it goes through procedure. We are called. We were acting like an agent.
Yes. Abington doesn't have an agent, and the chairman or vice chairman has always acted as the agent.
Yes.
When there's been a complaint. But there was a procedure.
Yes. And as it goes back further, long before my time, when Alec was on there, right on our agenda is a generic site visit. If, if we went, myself or Russ as chair or vice chair, we would then bring it up to the board of the vice, of the site visit. As far as the visit specifically that Karen Bowen just talked about in April, I don't recall it. I, we've been to many, and I just don't recall that one in specific. But there is procedure to everything that's done, including forms, if there's a emergency with the town, we have to, I think it's a WP9, I think, and so forth. Everything has a procedure. They don't want to learn it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bowen, if it's quick, and it's, it's related directly to this, we're not going to get into a back and forth, just a very quick statement, if you have one.
Okay. The other thing, too, is, Rick, I don't know why you say it several times, that we've been there, or somebody said it several times. It was April 9th or 11th, when Nancy Hurst and Andrew Poynant sent us an email saying, there's a violation. We came out, we were very friendly, you showed us your beautiful place. I mean, you remember that, right? And you said, you know, come on out and walk it anytime you want. And I do apologize, thinking that that was a perpetual thing.
When we had that conversation, you were saying, I want to be with my dog.
Right, right.
Miss...
I know that I opened it up to say, anytime, council, you want to come out here.
Miss, Ms. Bowen, that, that email in April from, was that directly to you from the town, or was that to the Conservation Commission?
No. Nancy and Andrew sent it to me. I can get you a copy of it.
Okay.
The other thing, too, is, I'd like to know why, oh, and I did speak to your workmen when I got on the property. He came out.
Ms. Bowen, speak to the board, please. We're not speaking to the audience. Just, if you have something to say, speak, and then to the board.
When we got there, the gentleman came out, the gentleman that does the tree clearing for him, and we had a small conversation. He said, oh, yeah, no problem, you know, you know, and he didn't even say, he said Rick wasn't there. So, the other thing, too, is, we had, there was no notice of, there was no notice when we got the site request, the site visit request in April. We didn't file a notice to the other people. I mean, we just, we went out, and that was never a violation. And the other one was when Avalon asked for their certificate of compliance, and it was determined by Sam and I, I mean, we talked to the committee. We said, oh, yeah, we'll do it, you know, and that nothing had to be, we didn't call Avalon and say, we're going to be out on such and such a day to be able to view it.
And again, I understand what the previous, but sticking to this, anything further on this?
Okay. But I'm just telling you, he's talking about procedures. And I have taken a lot of the classes, and I do have one of my certificates. So, I do have an interest in learning. Only, we don't have any leadership. We don't have anybody that says, by the way, we should do, I had to ask for the Wetland Protection Act to be printed out and given to us. I mean, we, we're not given this information. So, we're learning by the seat of our pants. And again, I'm sorry this happened. I'm sorry. I mean, I, I really didn't think we were trespassing, but other than that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, just to finish this up, because we're going to close it, does anyone else from the audience have anything to say on this matter? If you want to step up, state your name and address. We're going to keep it short, and then we're going to...
If you have something to say about this.
Yeah. And this is, this is directly related to this complaint right here?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
My name is Doug Olwick. I'm at 99 Dale Street, and I've been referred to a couple of times this evening as having made a dramatic presentation. I did make a presentation at the first notice of intent hearing regarding this property at 75 Dale Street. I made my presentation in two parts. The first part had to do with what I perceived to be four violations on the property. I live next door to it.
Ms. Mr. Olwick, I'm going to cut you off.
Yeah.
That's, was at the meeting, this complaint right here of Mr. Montgomery stating about the people on the property that day, if, if you witnessed something over there to speak of on this complaint, if, if not, we...
It's relative to that, sir, and I beg you just a few moments.
Keep it brief.
I will, as brief as I can. I was surprised at the end of my presentation that a meeting was not scheduled. However, I did hear Karen speak out loud to several members, I want to go see this, who wants to come with me. So, it was announced at part of the hearing. I can't tell you if the hearing was open or closed at that point. I heard it, and I was encouraged by it, in that when I report four violations, and by the way, in writing to the town through Nancy, and it got forwarded, she told me, to the head, excuse me, to the chairman of the commission, and also to the DEP. I was surprised that nothing was scheduled, so I was encouraged when something was scheduled, informally, apparently, and apparently not in accordance with procedure. But I applaud people who do fact finding before they have their meetings, because the meeting is ongoing. It was continued till tomorrow night. And I'm sorry, for Mr. Montgomery's sake, that this happened, that there was any sort of confrontation in his perception. That's wrong. It really is. But I applaud members of the Conservation Commission who want to educate themselves about what's being presented in front of them. And I'm sorry that the entire board didn't feel that was something that was significant enough to schedule a hearing or a meeting. And I guess had they scheduled for the entire board, it would have been open meeting, and they would have had to advertise it and follow other procedures. But nonetheless, I feel a little responsible for being the person who started all this by mentioning my complaint and filing my complaint with all the appropriate authorities.
Ms. Olwick.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have from me.
Just, just one quick question, because you brought it up.
Yes.
You heard Karen at the last meeting say, was she, did she ask the chairman to, you know, put it on the agenda, or if the board, if the committee could do a site walk, and the chairman, like, answered her at this meeting?
No.
Or was it just kind of a, more of an off the cuff, then you want to go?
It was very off the cuff, out loud. I heard it, and I wasn't sitting up at the table. I assume other people heard it, just based upon that. But it wasn't something that we voted on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else from the audience have anything further to state? Mr. Dombrowski, again, very short and directly related to this complaint.
During, close to the end of the hearing, Mr. Montgomery's engineer asked the commission if they could walk the site with any... if they could walk the site with any, to review any additional information. The chairman of the commission denied him, saying that would be in violation of the open meeting law. So, he had the opportunity then and there to establish an open meeting, which the whole commission could go and visit the site.
Okay.
But if you watched the hearing, you can clearly hear the denial. That, I thought, was wrong.
So, you're saying that there was some sort of talk in that the chairman did deny the walk, the site visit?
Yes, the engine, you can clearly hear the engineer request at the time to review the plans. He was going to be submitting additional information, he wanted to meet with the commission, which I find no problem with if they go through the process and arrange a meeting.
Okay.
So, if the chairman, if the chairman refused the walk, why were you there?
To see the site.
If the chairman refused it?
We weren't doing an open meeting. We weren't conducting a full meeting on property. We were there to view the site, strictly look at the site, get an idea of what's going on, seeing firsthand what the site looks like, seeing firsthand what the resources are involved. You can't sit behind the desk and protect the resources without getting out and looking at them.
And, and I don't think anyone's, you know, denying that part of it, that just, there's a procedure and there's a process to do that.
Well, you keep on going back to the procedure. The procedure is not to establish a site meeting for the purpose of getting the entire commission out to view the site. If that's what the commission, you wanted to do with the commission, go out there and say, "View the full wetlands line, or certain things that are being proposed." If you want to get the whole commission out there to view it and agree to it, that's one thing.
And Mr. Dombrowski, if, if I was to, if this board wanted to go, every single member of this board would be invited to go, regardless of what the visit was about. It's, we're not a one-person board, we're a five-member board, so...
And we, and we would advertise it.
You would be considering or creating an open meeting?
No, we wouldn't, because we, yeah, we would, we would post the meeting.
We would post it.
And then do the visit.
And we would post it for a site walk.
But if any one individual wanted to walk the property, they could, couldn't they? Are you saying they can't?
If they had permission from the owner.
If they got permission from the owner?
If you had permission from the owner, would you not walk the site?
If you had permission, did you have permission?
If you asked and received permission, and you walked it?
Did you have permission that day?
You're asking my, answering my question with a question. Did you have permission that day to do a site walk?
I believe we had permission from Mr. Montgomery, yes.
Okay.
What permission for that day did you have? That you can provide for us?
What he said at the, during the meeting.
But for that day specifically, to go out there, did you have permission for that specific day, August 13?
There was no specific communication to establish it for a particular day.
Okay.
Or a particular time.
So, with that being said, Mr. Dombrowski, if anything further, quickly stated, but we're going to, we're going to move this forward now.
No, I just think that you're skipping a process in the, in the meeting process.
Okay.
Not all sites are visiting under a full board review.
And, and again, that is your input, I appreciate it. Again, thank you. Anything further? If not, we're going to move this forward.
One thing I want to go on, rock of the sand. The last statement made from Mr. Montgomery to us as we were getting ready to leave the site, is, is it okay that I continue putting in, or is it okay I put in the silt fence and the silt socks?
Okay.
And the response was by me, whatever the chairman agreed upon, there was no vote, there was continuing activity going on in that site.
Okay. Thank you. If, do you have one quick, yes, and then we're going to move this forward after this, we will move it forward.
I just want to say that when Mr. Montgomery did give us permission, he did not give us permission precedent on him being there or organizing a time. If he was concerned, he would have said, "Sure, come along anytime, but give me a call first, or organize this." He did say this after we were there that day, that next time you come, please call and make an appointment. But prior to that, he did not say that.
So, if you asked like us today, "Come to, you know, my house and look at the noise complaint," or something, and would you be surprised if you weren't home and we were walking on your property?
I didn't know he wasn't even home until he started driving down the driveway.
Put it this way, you...
Did you ask?
If he was home?
You just started walking his property without asking, knocking on the door?
Well, everyone else, everyone else was there, so I was just doing what everyone else was.
If you gave us permission to walk your property, you, why, what you're, you're saying is, we would have permission to walk your property for the indefinite future at any time that we choose to come to your property, do you, do you agree with that?
No, I would say to you...
Okay, so, just the statement that was made might have been that, but you got to remember, it's, it's not just an open, "Hey, come in three months, come in a year from now, hey, come at 10:00 PM, come at 7:00." There's a little bit more to it, I think, I think we all understand that. But is, if there's anything further you need to, you want to add, please do, but if not, we're going to move this forward to the board.
I just want to say one, one thing.
Yes.
If I invite you to my property, I'll say, "Come over anytime you want, just give me a call." That's what I normally say.
Okay. Thank you. Real quick, and then this is the last comment. State your name and address.
Paul Bunker, 19 Paragon Road. I'm also a voting member on the Conservation Commission. At the last meeting, Karen did mention, I don't know what time it was in the meeting, but if anybody wanted to go out and do a site walk, basically after Doug made his presentation, just to see what potential violations from tree cutting impact on the wetlands was. I don't think it was anything to try and change anybody's perception on the vote for tomorrow's meeting, I think it was just to see what was going on out there. You know, he, Doug had a bunch of pictures, trees being cut down, potential issues in the wetlands, and I think it's just something we should see.
Mr. Bunker, were you invited to that meeting, to the site walk?
At the last meeting, yeah.
But I mean, were you part of the text messages or the emails?
No text messages, no emails, no nothing, no.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. We have to move this forward. Real quick, one comment. State your name and address, please.
Jean Matiosis, 32 Nile Street. I'm the newest member, the brandy new member on the Conservation Commission as an associate member. And I did watch the last meeting because Nancy had suggested I do that, to come up to speed. I do remember the question being raised, you know, "Can we walk the site?" And that gentleman there said, "Sure, you know, yeah, I welcome you guys too." I just wanted to confirm that.
Thank you.
And then, you know, what I'm hearing tonight, if at the end of the Conservation Commission meeting, or whenever the televised version stopped, if someone had said, "Hey, let's, does anybody want to go out and visit?" I probably would have gone along too, because there, I mean, is there a handbook or some sort of instructions? And if the, if the commissioner was there, and he sure said, "Oh, oh, wait a minute," I would have expected him to at least speak up and say, "You need to do this first, and not just go on your own."
Okay.
So, this is making me a little nervous. Thank you.
Thank you. One last comment, and then we're closing this.
William Cormier, 29 Orange Street. Is this piece of property, was this discussed at the last meeting with the auction?
No.
No, because I, okay, that's all.
It's not the same property, there is some other property around there.
This isn't the farmland that Mr. Ulwick was speaking of?
This is a separate piece of property than what we had on the auction list. It's not the same property we had on the auction.
Is it owned by this gentleman though?
No.
Okay.
The auction list was owned by the town.
I understand that, but...
The farmland in question that, around that, is this farmland, yes.
Then it almost seems to me like the several members and Mr. Ulwick had it as an agenda to have it out for this gentleman after listening to that meeting at the last board meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I apologize to you as a resident, and the four members whose reputation has been sullied over this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so, Scott, do you have anything further that you would like to talk about before we move forward?
No, I think you all have a copy of, of the bylaws that sort of spell out what you can do. I do think, you know, one thing to keep in mind, all of these members, as you all know, when they were sworn in, were given a copy of the ethics rules, and that, you know, the, within that, there's links to the open meeting law, and, and although they didn't break the open meeting law, they certainly didn't use really good judgment on this. I think that, you know, one thing that I've done, or tried to make a point of with, within Town Hall since I've been here, is that, you know, we treat everybody with respect, you know, we act professionally in decorum. And I don't believe that asking someone to put their hands out and humiliating them, slapping their hands while representing the town is appropriate. So, you do with that, with what you may...
So, back to the bylaws. Any appointed town officer, member of multiple-member body, or employee of the town, not subject to the provisions of the state civil service law, or covered by the terms of a collective bargaining agreement, which provides a different method, and whether appointed for a fixed or indefinite term, may be suspended or, after notice and the opportunity for a hearing, removed from office without compensation by the appointing authority for good cause. The term "good cause" shall include but not be limited to incapacity other than temporary illness, inefficiency, insubordination, and conduct unbecoming of the office. Any appointed officer, member of a multiple-member body, or employee of the town may be suspended from office by the appointing authority if such action is deemed by said appointing authority to be necessary to protect the interests of the town. However, other than the town manager as provided in section 4-7, no suspension shall be for more than 15 days. Suspension may be con- terminus with removal. Nothing in this section shall be construed as granting a right to such a hearing when a person who has been appointed for a fixed term is not reappointed when the original term expires. So, that's the bylaw, so the board knows. And again, this is an action discussion item, so at this point, if there is a motion to be made, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, Ms. Montgomery, I believe everything you said. And I do believe that those members of the Conservation Commission that went out and did this site, did it intentionally without notifying the other four members. Like Scott just said, since he's been here, we've been trying to make this a more friendly, more resident-oriented business, if you will. We've had numerous problems in the building office, and that problem's been taken care of. We can't condone this behavior. None of you four would accept this behavior if one of us showed up at your house and slapped you and humiliated you. And we can't do that. You planned this for several days, texting back and forth before you got a date. With that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we suspend Lynn Mullen for 15 days, and that's because she is the newest member, and I don't believe she knew what was going on. And remove Joan Harding, Karen Bowen, and Jim Dombrowski from the Conservation Commission.
I'm going to second that, Alex.
Alex, would you, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board on this?
Alex, would you consider voting on these separately?
No, my motion is what it is.
Okay, so, we have a motion from Alex Bezanson, suspend Lynn Mullen for 15 days, and to remove Joan Harding, Karen Bowen, and Jim Dombrowski. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board on this?
I would benefit us doing this individually.
Okay, you're, you're welcome to make a motion, Alex, if you'd like.
All right, I will...
But there is a motion on the floor, so...
We have to vote on that first.
So...
I mean, I just continue the discussion on Alex Bezanson's motion. I, I agree with Alex, I think there's different, different things at play that I would like to see each person handle separately. The motion is what it is, and seconded, so...
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, so no further discussion at this time? So, for the motion to suspend Lynn Mullen 15 days, and to remove Joan Harding, Joanne Demak Harding, and Jim Dombrowski, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. The motion passes 3-2. So, next up on the agenda is town manager report. Scott?
Okay. So, tomorrow, we are planning to complete our candidate assessments for police chief. Hopefully, everything goes well, and we'd like to be moving on with that process, and hopefully I'll be in front of you with some news on our next scheduled meeting.
So, you said tomorrow?
I did, yes.
You just hold on one second to the... All right, sorry, Scott.
As you might recall, we posted a survey for, asking the residents how they feel about our current website. We're planning on doing a major overhaul of the website, and we're just trying to get some feedback, so we're going to have it up for one more week. If you guys, you know, I'll push it out on Facebook again, if you guys on your channels can push it out. I encourage everybody to just participate, and, you know, so far, we've gotten some great feedback. It's not really much of a surprise, is, you know, some of the important components that people are looking, they would like to see more news and events posted on there, a little more access to bill pay, a lower percentage for some contact info and agendas and minutes updates.
And more pictures of the selectmen?
Absolutely, that was actually on top of the updates. Yeah. They want more streamlined usability, which is a lot of what we've talked about with our new site, that it'll be much more user-friendly. They want, again, contact info and better search capability. So, again, we'd like to encourage as many people to participate in that as possible, so it'll be up there for another week. Let's see, Liz Shea and I had a meeting with the, a brief meeting with the Collins Center today. We're moving forward, we are eligible for two community compact grants. I've spoken about one of them in the past, that starting out for our capital improvement plan, it's a very robust plan that they're going to work with, so we're in that. Our second grant that we're going to work on is a financial planning tool. What I really want them to help us with is, is doing some four, five, or five and six year projections, long-term, short-term projections on our, where we think we'll be going with revenue growth and expenses, just to see where things are going to meet, and hopefully they won't diverge too soon. The auction was a success, I don't know that we've talked about that. We did net just over a million dollars. We're going to have some discussions with this board and with the finance committee, and obviously, other committees aren't exactly what that, you know, what we'll be using that money for. I'd like to use it for debt, but other people have better ideas, but...
We'll discuss that.
And I'd like to put a thanks out to the fence company.
Hawkeye Fence.
Hawkeye Fence, that was great.
Right on Santa Street in Brofman.
John, John Stoneditch sent a picture over, they do have the fence up around the gazebo, hopefully.
And actually, Kelly was right, there is a very huge shortage of that fence out there right now. George actually had to make that for us.
Did he? Well, I'll thank him for that, and we'll have more on that in our next meeting, I hope. So, there was an incident, there was an incident over on Bedford Street at one of the automotive buildings. There seemed to have been a large party, a very large party there. The police department had a call from Mutual Aid to break it up, and I think that we'll probably end up having a show cause hearing with the owner, and I'll try and schedule it actually for our next meeting, for him to come in and tell us why they were using that building beyond the scope of what their permitted use is.
You said that was Bedford Street?
Yes, I believe it was Bedford Street.
Because we had a similar issue with one, one on Adams Street.
No? 43 Highland Road? No? 43 Highland Road, which...
Oh.
Which is...
That's that, that's a building on Route 18.
That property has been a problem for years.
Do you know what, what business it was, Scott, or was it a newer one, one that's been there, do you know?
I believe it was, let's see, you hear the music, Troy Belcher. I didn't look up whether that was the latest one. It was actually, from what the report spells out, is that Mr. DeAndrea, the owner of the building, actually gave permission for a certain event to take place there. It obviously got beyond the scope of what he had hoped. They asked Mr. DeAndrea to come down and help clear the party, which he did. He did come down, he did assist in trying to remove the people from there, but I think we still want to have him come in and explain why he was approving that kind of use, because it's obviously well beyond the scope of what we expected it to be.
So, we'll have that business owner, and then also Mr. DeAndre come in as well, right?
Yep.
That'll be on the 30th, August 30th meeting?
That'd be my preference, would be to do it then, yeah.
Okay. And any relevant information in the interim, you'll, you'll get for us for the board?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Is anything further from the board?
Yeah, just one more reminder to anyone out there in TV land, Wednesday is the deadline for committee appointment applications, and we will be appointing next Monday night.
So Wednesday, this Wednesday, August 25th, will be the deadline to submit an application by the...
4:30-ish.
4:30 by the end of business on Wednesday, August 25th, for the appointment meeting on Monday, August 30th, which is a week from today.
That is correct, sir.
Good. With that being said, Conservation Commission, you will have those posted, or...
Yeah, well, you know, I, I don't think you'll be able to unless we happen to have some...
I would, I would like to...
In there, I think we would put the Conservation Commission ones off.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to give it some time on that one, so...
Probably the end of September.
We have a farm, so they can handle it.
In the, in the interim, but we do need to get that posted, so if we could get that on the website, and then, yeah, maybe the second meeting in September, whatever that may be, or around, they will come up with a date.
Yeah, I think the Wednesday before our September meeting, even the first September meeting.
Yeah, I think it's the first September meeting.
I don't want to go too long with only four minutes.
So that will be...
Because they need twice a month.
That will be Monday, September 13th would be our meeting.
So the deadline would be the Wednesday before that?
So, if we want to do the deadline for Wednesday, September 8th.
I think that's enough time if we get it posted tomorrow.
I do think we've actually already have interest in it all, also, from previous...
I'm sure we, there's a lot of talk about that.
Okay, so...
Conservation right now, so...
Conservation Commission...
Expect there'll be a lot of applications.
Yeah, Conservation Commission will be put on the website, town website. We will be accepting applications until Wednesday, September 8th, and then we will make those appointments if we have anything on Monday, September 13th.
Good.
Okay. Nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Motion, meeting adjourned.